Thank you. I'd like to call the July 23rd, 2012, regular meeting of the Frankfurt Board of Commissioners to Order. First item is an invitation by the Reverend Gary Hager of the Westview Baptist Church. So I would like for people to please stand and then after the invitation, please help pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Our Father, as we come before your presence, we confess our great need for you in our lives. We ask for your direction in the affairs of the city of Frankfurt. We say a special prayer for our mayor tonight, Father, that you would continue to bring healing in his body. Father, we believe in your divine grace and how truly amazing it is. May we remember the great responsibility that your providence has played in the lives of all of these that will be recognized tonight. May we remember to walk humbly before you and those in whom we serve. We ask a special prayer for the families and victims in Colorado. Strengthen that city with your love, in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you Reverend Hager. All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Hadden?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Here. So we're all present accounted for. First, next item of business is the minutes for the June 13th, 2012 special meeting, June 25th, 2012 regular meeting, June 28th, 2012 special meeting, July 9th, 2012 work session. So we've got a motion for approval from Commissioner May, second.
Second.
Mr. Hadden, any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so the minutes are approved. We've got a good crowd here tonight and we've got some good things and people to recognize. So we'll turn it over for the ceremony items, turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to recognize several members of our fire department. Chief Postage, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Goins. See, I probably got the longest part of the agenda tonight, so I'll try to move it along as quickly as possible. We've got five retirements that we want to recognize tonight, people with a lot of years of service that are leaving our department. When you combine those years of service among all five people, it's 112 years of experience going out the door.
How many years?
112 years.
Wow.
So quite impressive. First, I would like to call up Sergeant Jamie Erkhart. Jamie has been with us 13 years and 10 months, but his total time in the fire service is about 22 years.
Yes, sir.
So I'm sure he'll look forward to see you retirement. We have a plaque for you which has your helmet, the shield off of his actual firefighting helmet mounted on it with all his rank insignia. It reads, "Jamie A. Erkhart, for your dedication to the city, citizens of Frankfurt, Franklin County, in your 13 years and 10 months of service to Frankfurt Fire and EMS, 1998-2012." Have one other thing for you. I have a commendation for you that I'd like to present to you. Sergeant Jamie Erkhart has voluntarily served as chaplain for Frankfurt Fire and EMS for several years. In that role, he has offered counseling and advice as well as prayers and comfort during times of need for department personnel. He has produced monthly newsletters and represented the department both informally and during formal ceremonies. For his service and dedication, it is with appreciation that Sergeant Jamie Erkhart is presented with a departmental commendation on this day of July 23rd, 2012. Next, I'd like to call up Sergeant Dee Woolley. Again, same type of plaque, their actual firefighting helmet shields. Dee has actually been in the fire service for 24 years. She's retiring from us with about 11 and a half. Her plaque reads, "Denise Woolley, for your dedication to the citizens of Frankfurt, Franklin County, in your 11 years and 5 months of service to Frankfurt Fire and EMS, February 2001 to July 2012." And I forgot this on Jamie, I'll have to make it up to him. We also have the city of Frankfurt's certificate of appreciation that's presented to you on behalf of the mayor because he's back and bothered tonight, so I'm taking his place, which is kind of hard to do. Certificate of appreciation is hereby granted to Denise Woolley for 11 years and 5 months of outstanding service to the citizens of Frankfurt, granted to her last week, 2012. One other quick thing, also a commendation for you. Frankfurt Fire and EMS has had the privilege and distinct pleasure of providing a professional, well-organized, and well-praised honor guard and color guard to local, state, and national events. Sergeant Denise Woolley has been instrumental in organizing and coordinating both teams and in serving in various formal functions representing the department and the city of Frankfurt. Sergeant Woolley's commitment and dedication to the honor guard and color guard teams warrant recognition and appreciation, and as such, she is presented with the unit citation medal on this day of July 23rd. Next retiree is Lieutenant Jeff Brooks. And I know this is exactly what you wanted your plaque. We've got a model there that's after yours. So again, a similar plaque with all his rank badge and signature. Jeffrey A. Brooks, for your dedication to the citizens of Frankfurt, Franklin County, and your 16 years and 6 months of service to Frankfurt Fire and EMS. And actually, his has two dates on it. He came to Frankfurt Fire Department in 1990 and through, I guess, a Brian, or something like that, and saw the light and later came back in 1997 until today. So he has a total of 24 years of fire service.
22.
22.
22 years.
So thank you so much for your service.
Well, thank you, sir.
And also have the city's certificate of appreciation for you, again, on behalf of Similar verbiage, presented to Jeff Brooks for 16 years and 6 months of outstanding service, thank you from the city of Frankfurt. And one more thing for you. I'm being overly generous tonight. Commendation to Lieutenant Jeffrey A. Brooks. The initiative and leadership you demonstrated in making improvements to the North Frankfurt Fire Station has not gone unnoticed. Throughout the past 24 months, you and your crew have gone above and beyond in enhancing the appearance of the station with carpentry, painting, landscaping, and repairs. For your efforts, dedication, and hard work, and in the spirit of pride in your station and the fire department, I am pleased to present you with the unit citation medal on Next, we have Battalion Chief Doug Taylor. We also have Kyle Smith coming up, and both of their flags aren't here yet, so I have to present you with, you'll get it later in the week, but present you with the city's certificate for your 21 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Frankfurt. Doug rose through the ranks from firefighter to battalion chief, and he was appointed EMS Director back in '09 and has served in that capacity until today. There we go on that. And also I have for you... A commendation for Battalion Chief Douglas S. Taylor. On September 14th, 2009, Doug Taylor was assigned to the position of EMS Director for Frankfurt Fire and EMS. In his role, the emergency medical services for the residents and visitors of the city of Frankfurt and Franklin County has grown and been enhanced to a higher degree of professionalism dedicated to providing the highest level of emergency medical care possible. Battalion Chief Taylor has assumed many projects and tasks for the betterment of the department and the citizens in need of emergency care. He has faced and overcome numerous obstacles and has served in an unselfish, professional, and dedicated manner. Therefore, EMS Director Douglas Taylor is hereby awarded the Chief's Commendation Medal for exemplary service on this day of July 23rd. And the last retiree tonight is Battalion Chief Kyle Smith. And again, Kyle knows his plaque is coming later this end of the week. The city's certificate of appreciation reads that it's hereby granted to Kyle Smith for 21 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Frankfurt, granted on this date. And I also have a commendation for Kyle. On June 29th, 2010, Battalion Chief Kyle Smith was assigned to the position of Fire Training Officer for Frankfurt Fire and EMS. In his role, the training program for the department has grown and improved to exceed many required levels of training. He has implemented numerous initiatives and enhanced training policies and has been instrumental in acquiring and constructing the first phase of the department training facility. Battalion Chief Smith is known statewide for his teaching ability and his commitment to having firefighters adequately and thoroughly trained with the skills they need. For his dedication and service, Battalion Chief Kyle Smith is hereby awarded the Chief's Commendation Medal on this day of July 23rd. And next, we have, as a result of all these retirements, we have seven promotions tonight. So in the interest of time and because we have so many, I'm going to switch things up a little bit and call them all once up at one time, if that's okay with the board. I'd like to ask Richard Frost to come up, who is being promoted tonight to the rank of sergeant, and his wife. Firefighter Scott Meyer, if you would also come up. Scott is also being promoted tonight to the rank of sergeant. Rich has been with us five, six years. Scott, seven years. Next, we have firefighter Scott Trues, who is becoming a sergeant tonight. And if you'd bring your wife up, I'm going to let the wives pin the badges on. Also, we have Sergeant Michael Felty, who is currently a sergeant, and he's becoming a lieutenant. Michael's been with us since 2003. If y'all would just kind of like to line up across the front so the audience could see, and I'll pass the badges out for the wives. Next, we have Jack Williams, who's not here tonight, but I wanted to recognize the fact that he's also being promoted to lieutenant. And finally, we have Lieutenant, we have Lieutenant Wayne Briscoe, who's assuming the role of captain. And Wayne has risen from the ranks from sergeant to lieutenant, now captain, and also served a couple of years as our EMS director. Okay, if the wives would pin your badges on, you'll become official, actually, at
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right.
And one more quick thing, and then I'll sit down and be quiet. I would also like to recognize three individuals who are here tonight who are assuming the assigned staff positions in the department. We have Jason, we have Joe Teasley, who was appointed as fire marshal. If you'd just be recognized there, Joe. We have Captain John Redfern in the white shirt, who is going to become the training officer, assuming Kyle Smith's role. And last, but certainly not least, firefighter paramedic Steve Clark, who's going to be our new EMS director.
Congratulating, thank each of you for your service to our city. Those who have retired, I hope you have a good retirement. Those who are most, I hope you continue to enjoy, you know, work with the city. Other commissioners may want to say something to Commissioner May, then we'll come down from the panel.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always a joyous occasion to get to see folks move up through the ranks and to see their families and their loved ones here to support them. It's a tough job, and I know how difficult it is for you all at home, and so we thank you for that support base. And it's always a little bit of a mix of sadness and joy for those that get to retire because they get to go do something else, but we're going to, it's sad for us because we're not going to have them here anymore. And I just have to give special recognition, some of you may or may not know that Dee Woolley was our first female firefighter. I had that honor, swearing her in several years ago. Doesn't seem like it was almost 12 years ago that we stood down in Jan Bay and brought in our first female firefighter, broke that ground, so it's going to be tough to see these folks go. All of them have done a tremendous job, Kyle, Doug, Jeff, Denise, and Jamie. I'm going to miss all of them, but we're looking forward to hearing about your new careers. Jamie's going to Alaska, so he's really going to be far away. And the others, I hope you all stay close by so you can come and visit, and Jamie, you're always welcome to come back and visit too. But Chief, thank you for your selections on the duty assignments, and we wish all of you well, and thank you for your service. And thanks to the families of these retiring firefighters too for being there. Thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
I just want to thank all the retirees for their service. 100 and some odd years is quite a bit. And to congratulate all of those who are receiving promotion or different duty assignments today. Hard work pays off, and we up here, I know I don't speak for the board, but I think they would all agree with me in that we all truly appreciate all the hard work you all put in. So thank you all, and congratulations.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Good luck retirees with all the things you get to do now with all those lists that we have at home that need to get done, that maybe actually might have some time. And for all the, everyone else who's been promoted, congratulations, and we'll see you around.
Thank you.
Your retirements and promotions are very well earned, and we appreciate your service and hope you all enjoy both your new positions and the time you get to spend with your families.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you guys once again for all you've done, and we will continue to do.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item of the agenda is citizen comments. Do you have any citizens who'd like to come before the commission this time? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the ordinance, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 4.1, an ordinance to amend the city of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the city of Frankfurt's zoning regulations, Article 12, minimum off-street parking requirements, Sections 12.02, 12.03, 12.04, 12.06, 12.07, 12.08, and 12.09 of the city of Frankfurt's zoning ordinance. Summary, this ordinance amends the city's zoning ordinance, Article 12, parking requirements, by reducing the number of parking required for specific uses to provide incentives for sites providing permeable parking surfaces, to clarify parking designs, and to add requirements for drive-through lanes, and this is a second reading.
Okay, do I have a motion? You got a motion from Commissioner May for approval, Mr. Wilder for second? Any discussion? Commissioner Wilder?
I just, I'd like to thank everybody. I know a lot of different folks put work into this, some citizen groups in the Chamber of Commerce and our own City-City County Planning Commission. And not only will this decrease in parking requirements help us deal with our stormwater problems by creating less stormwater runoff, but it'll also make it that much easier to develop and do business in the city. So not only does it help us with stormwater, but I think it also helps a little bit with economic development, but it's, I know a lot of work went into this, and we really appreciate it.
Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.1 is approved. Mr. Moore?
Ordinance 4.2, an ordinance to amend the city of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the city of Frankfurt's zoning regulations, Article 19, conditional uses, Sections 19.0710, 19.0711, and 19.0714 of the city of Frankfurt's zoning ordinance. Summary, this ordinance amends the city's zoning ordinance, Article 19, conditional uses, by conditionally allowing, by conditional use, barber shops, beauty shops, mobile pet grooming, massage therapists, and internet sales, and this is a second reading.
Okay, do I have a motion for Commissioner Wilder? Got a second? Mr. Turner? Any comments, discussion? Commissioner Wilder?
I'll just note that this was one of the priorities we set at the beginning of the year to allow a little more mixed use in residential neighborhoods. I don't think that this'll have any negative impact in the residential neighborhoods, but it will make it that much easier to conduct these particular businesses, which can only help us economically. I will note that I do hope that in time we can take a closer look at allowing for something even more permissive along the lines of corner stores, so that folks can actually walk to get milk or eggs within the neighborhoods, but this is a great first step.
Okay, thank you. The other permit. Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.2 is approved.
Ordinance 4.3, an ordinance amending Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, Disaster and Emergency Services Agency, Section 36.095, agency-created director, and Section 36.096, a acquisition of surplus property. Summary, this ordinance renames the Disaster and Emergency Services Agency to the Office of Emergency Management.
All right. Second reading. Okay, do I have a motion for approval? Commissioner May, you got a second? Commissioner Wilder, any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.3 is approved. More.
4.4, an ordinance amending Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 97, hazardous materials, Section 97.01, establishment of hazardous material response team. Summary, this ordinance places the hazardous materials response team under the supervision of the city of Frankfurt Fire Department, and this is a second reading.
All right, yeah. Do I have a motion for approval? Commissioner Hadden, a second back. Commissioner Wilder, any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.4 is approved. All right, Mr. Moore?
4.5, an ordinance amending Chapter 110 of the city of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 110.04, and Chapter 111 of the city of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 111.30. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 110.04, net business profits, to increase the amount of the minimum net business profits fee to $60, and amends Section 111.30, itinerant businessmen and contractors to provide that they are only required to pay the minimum annual net business profits fee of $60 with no additional license fee due. First reading.
Okay, without objection, we accept the first reading.
So can I make a note on that, Mayor?
Certainly.
Just for the sake of the public's understanding, this increases the business license fee by $25, but it also gets rid of a transient, a different transient fee that is also $25. So any transient workers in the city are already paying $60 annual, but they're currently paying it at two different times of the year, and there's a lot of, a lot of folks miss that second payment because they're not really, they don't really understand that there's actually two separate bills due at two separate times of the year. So this just simplifies, simplifies that process. Anybody who's already paying $60 a year in taxes isn't going to see any impact from this. It'll just make things simpler and hopefully make it easier for folks to stay in compliance. Anything we can do to make it more simple and easy to do business in the city, I think, is probably a pretty good thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore?
Ordinance 4.6, an ordinance amending Chapter 71, Section 71.31 of the city of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 71.31 to provide that speed limits over city streets shall be 25 miles per hour unless marked otherwise, and this is a first reading.
Okay, without an objection, we will accept the first reading of 4.6. All right. That concludes the ordinances. Now we have the orders.
Thank you. Order 5.1 is an order confirming adoption of an interloper agreement between the city of Frankfurt and Franklin County Fiscal Court for the operation and maintenance of four youth ball fields at Lakeview Park.
All right, do I have a motion for approval? Senator, Mr. Turner? Second. Second. Mr. Wilder? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so order 5.1 is approved.
Resolution 6.1 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to make an application for, and upon approval, to enter into an agreement with Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, application for 2011 Kentucky Homeland Security to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the K.O.H.S. to facilitate and administer the grant funds for four device mechanical compressors and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project.
Motion for Resolution 6.1. Commissioner Wilder, you got a second? Mr. Turner? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, so Resolution six point one.
Item six point two, resolution authorizing the mayor to make an application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, application for 2011 Kentucky Homeland Security, to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the K O H S to facilitate and administer grant funds for two cardiac monitor defibrillators and to act as authorized correspondent for this project. This amounts to funding of $60,251 from Homeland Security and does not require a match from the city.
I have motion for approval of Resolution six point two. Commissioner Haddon, second? Commissioner Wilder, any comment? Our please call the board.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, so Resolution six point two is approved. Now, Mr. Turner.
Consent calendar, item seven point one, to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Creative Microsystems Incorporated to provide fixed asset software in order to automate the depreciation calculation and to provide for annual maintenance for that program. The total amount, total cost of this is $17,960. Item seven point two, approval of an agreement between the city of Frankfurt and the Frankfurt Cricket Club for the use of the field and parking area adjacent to the city wastewater treatment plant on Kentucky Avenue and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. They agree, the cricket club agrees to pay the amount of $200 to the city for use of the field and to provide a certificate of insurance. Item seven point three, approval of a professional services agreement with Otis Engineering, LLC for the investigation of failing sewers along Klein Street in Bell Point and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the project. The total contract amount is not to exceed $5,000. Item seven point four, to authorize the mayor to sign the trustee agreement contract for the police and firefighters retirement fund between the city of Frankfurt and Community Trust and Investment Company. This authorization would allow the mayor to sign and all related documents for the trustee agreement. Item seven point five, to authorize payment to Mission Communications, LLC for the annual telemetering fee for pump stations and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with this project. This is in the amount of $30,040 and 20 cents. Item seven point six, personnel items. Retirement, Kyle Smith, Fire Battalion Chief Training Officer. Retirement, Doug Taylor, Fire Battalion Chief EMS. Retirement, Jeff Brooks, First Lieutenant in the fire service. Retirement, Denise Woolley, Fire EMS, First Sergeant in Fire Service. Retirement, James Uckart, First Sergeant in Fire Service. Now we have three duty assignments. John Redfern, begin duty assignment as Fire Training Officer. Joe Teasley, begin duty assignment as Fire Marshal. Duty assignment, Stephen B. Clark, begin duty assignment as Fire EMS Director. Promotions, Wayne Briscoe from Lieutenant to Fire Captain. Jack Williams from Fire Sergeant to Fire Lieutenant. Scott Tru from Firefighter Three to Fire Sergeant. Michael Felty from Fire Sergeant to Fire Lieutenant. Jason Monroe, Firefighter Three to Fire Sergeant. Scott Meyer from Firefighter Three to Fire Sergeant. Richard Frost, Firefighter Two to Fire Sergeant. Resignations, Sylvia Wilcoxen, E nine eleven Telecommunicator One. Chris Eaton, E nine one one Telecommunicator One. Retirement, Fred Goins, City Manager. We also have permission to make eight conditional offers of employment for the position of firefighter E M T recruits. The request to make these conditional offers of employment is contingent upon successful completion of background medical, psychological, polygraph, and drug screen examinations by each candidate.
Nick, conclude.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval and then, once we get it on the floor, I'd like to make a comment.
Very good, okay. Got a motion for approval? Mr. Turner, you got a second?
A second.
Mr. Haddon, okay. Mr. Turner.
I just want to make a comment. As many of you all noticed, among all of the retirements and promotions and personnel action that we're taking tonight, one of those positions is our City Manager, who will be retiring at the, in August, if I'm not mistaken. I just want to give a little background on Fred Goins. When I first came into office, was it now, a year and a half ago, City Hall was in an unprecedented position. We had been rocked with an ethics scandal. City Manager had left and there was a trust void among the public and the city of Frankfurt. And when we came into office, we were forced to choose a City Manager. And one of the things that I thought was important, and I think the rest of the board would agree with me on this, was that we find someone who can rebuild the reputation of Frankfurt. And nobody in this community has more honesty and integrity than Fred Goins. And this city will certainly miss his, miss him, and we certainly appreciate your service, Fred. Thank you.
Mr. Wilder.
Because I'd just like to note that whoever we find to replace you is, I think, going to have an easier, an easier job than you did, Fred. I think you're leaving the city in much better shape than you found it. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Question, Mike.
Thank you. And again, as we've already said about our firefighters and E M Ts leaving, but also acknowledge Chris Eaton, who's a former police officer with us and came back and then was in dispatch, and he's leaving, so we want to thank him for his service in both agencies and to those family members who support him. And it is, it's with, I guess, it's very difficult to compare city managers, and I've had an opportunity to serve with, with a few. But I will say Fred has been just a great help in coming in and trying to get things back on course. Will be sorely missed. And I don't like to say that I have favorites, but I will say that Fred has been my favorite City Manager to work with because his commitment to Frankfurt has been second to none. He's made his life here, and I think that's important, to have someone with ties to our community, to be in a leadership position such as City Manager, because he has a vested interest in what happens here. That's the short version. We'll save, I know when we do retirement speeches later, we'll, we'll say more, but for the short term, I just want to say thank you, Fred, for coming in and also for your continued friendship over the years and wish you well.
Okay.
But wish you weren't leaving.
Mr. Haddon, you want to say?
No, I think I'm the emotional one of the group, so.
Okay. I don't know. I want to tell you, Fred. I'm going to wrestle you to the ground. I still appreciate you so much. You have that demeanor about you that diffuses a lot of people sometimes, you have to deal with all people across the community, and you've done an excellent job with that, and it's been great working with you. And we've still got a month and a half.
Yeah, we've got a lot of work today.
That's right. Sure have.
Thank you for those kind comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got a call roll from consent.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, so please have a consent calendar approved. I would like, I want to mention something I forgot. You know, one of the, one part of this, of this consent calendar was our cricket team.
Oh, yes.
Now, a lot of people in our town do not know we have a cricket team. We've had one now for about three, at least three years before. And there's a dedicated group of people, and they bring in people from other cities like Indianapolis and Cincinnati and Columbus and different places. And I was sort of hopeful, before starting this about three years ago, I told those guys that I'd like for us to come to cricket capital of Kentucky.
Yes.
And we very well may, you know, we may do that. But their enthusiasm is blue. And if you get a chance to go watch some of their games, of course, they go on and known them for a long time. But it's, but it's something I think it's good for us to have, the cricket team. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, our board appointments. We have two for the Architecture Review Board, and I'd like to suggest that the approval of the reappointment of David Buckta to a three-year term ending nine, twelve, fifteen, and reappointment of Carol Reese to a three-year term ending nine, twelve, fifteen. Mr. White.
I move that we accept the mayor's recommendations on board appointments.
Okay, you got a second? Mr. Haddon, any discussion? Okay, please call the board.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes, and I thank Mr. Buckta and Ms. Reese for their continued service. Thank you, Mayor, for replan.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, so the board appointments, eight point one are approved. Next, we have the Green Vision Commission, appointment of Jeff Hackbart, Public Works Director, to represent the city as a member of the Green Vision Commission, and appointment of Bill Scauf, Sewer Director, to represent the city as a member of the Green Vision Commission. Do you have a motion for?
Move for approval, and I know they're just chomping at the bit to get to work, so.
Okay, thank you. Got a second from Mr. Wilder? Any more discussion? Okay, please call the board.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, so eight point two, the Green Vision Commission is approved. Next is old business. Commissioner Wilder.
I'm just curious to know when we'll be able to vote to lower property taxes. I know we had, we had been waiting to get the kind of, the final word on the previous fiscal year to see how everything panned out before reopening the budget, but yeah, we're gonna, I know you sent out a report on this, and our understanding is that revenues were just a little higher than expected and expenses were just a little lower.
Currently, this goes through a standard process every year, so I haven't gotten any information from, back from the county yet regarding our property values. It's, right now, the process where it is, it's at the state level, and they're supposed to, I would think the last week of July, first week of August, they'll have their property values back, and at that point, I can calculate what the 2% impact will be on the, on the revenues. But it's going to be probably the first, second week of August before I have, you know, get all that information and do the calculation. But I, I've got everything together to plug the figures into the, the standardized sheet and everything, so I've got everything ready, and it's kind of waiting to hear back from the county at this point. That's where we are.
So we can expect probably to have a first reading in August?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do a first reading in, in August.
Great. And in a work session in August, in regards to, we had, before passing the budget, we had discussed the need to have a budget amendment, you know, early into this fiscal year, once we got the final word on the, how the fiscal year closed out.
Right.
Those numbers, Randy, think we'll be ready to have that discussion this month?
Yeah, we can have a discussion. I can tell you where we are book-wise, how we shut down the books, and I sent an memo to the City Manager, actually, about a week ago, and I, I think you passed that.
Yeah, he did.
To you guys, so you, so you know that we closed the books out approximately $208,000, I think was the deficit down from, for the, for this past fiscal year that we just closed out. So I think we started a $9.1 million reserve that was laying on the books from the, from the audit. So $200,000 down has put us approximately $8.9 million at the end of the year. But of course, we haven't started the audit, so I don't know how that's going to play out, you know, because I, you know, we just closed the books out, so, but we've got to go through that to get the official, you know, reserve number at the end of the year. But we could go ahead, I reckon, based on, you know, where we are internally.
But unofficially, it looks like it's panned out at about 8.9.
Yeah, unofficially, yeah.
That's great news. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, in moral business, Commissioner Haddon.
I just have a question. It looks like the singing bridge is almost done. Is there a set date of when it may open? Do we know?
Sometime this week.
Sometime this week?
Sometime this week, I believe.
Wow. Great.
Yeah.
Great. It's looking really nice, by the way, you know, if they're listening.
Any other old business?
I have new business.
Can you move on to new business? And we have ten point ones, discussion of the City Manager position. Just before the meeting started, we got a little handout here about the hiring process, and I suppose the first thing we want to agree on, if we want to agree on, is the fact that we want to hire an interim and then start looking for a full time. That's, that's the way I, I think most of us feel. Is that correct? All right. Then, I had, I had inquired earlier that would we have to go in a closed session? You know, and was informed, we would not have to, as long we talked about this generically.
Just the general process.
Yes, just the general process. And that it, but that if any, any member of the commission had someone that you'd like to, whose name you'd like to bring forth, then we could go into closed session to discuss that. Now, is there, let me find, first of all, are there any names that commissioners have in mind that you'd like to go into closed session to discuss? No?
Well, the, I turned in a resume, the first meeting we did before. That candidate is still interested if anybody wants to, to consider him.
Okay, then if we do not have any names to discuss, how we want to go about advertising for the interim? Now, you look on the little sheet we have here, it said, you know, if we could run a newspaper ad, the State Journal, Lexington Herald, Courier-Journal, and maybe a possible suggested date for application deadline, August the 10th. Then would you be in agreement for some, that type of a timeframe? Okay? All right. Then, next one's like, the, who's going to review the resumes, applications, cut down to a manageable size? We, I would assume that the, Mr. Donahue and different ones would do that? How, y'all have any strong feelings on that?
I don't have any strong feelings on it, just as long as that, once it gets down to the manageable size, that we should have a chance to look over.
And then, the way they to have, would the commission handle job interviews of the top flight candidates? Would the city pay travel expenses for the candidates? Would there be a need to check references? If, when the commission decided to extend an offer, who would do so and who would be authorized to negotiate a deal? Is it possible to get someone started before August 27th to allow Fred to work side by side? It seems to me if we could get this application process started, we'd do that tonight, and then, and we have a person, Mr. Donahue, and maybe working with Mr. Moore or whomever, and see who's, they would come in, and then by the August the 10th date, we could have more clarity on this. Do y'all agree with that? Yeah, okay. So can we decide that, agree then, that we'll just follow this guideline and start advertising like tomorrow? See who, who, like to come in and take this on. All right, now then, on the long-term, would you be inclined for long-term to use a search team or a process simmered with what we would be doing on the interim?
I think that, back in comment, Mayor.
Sure, yes, sir.
When we went through this process last time, I felt that we had a pretty good process going in search for the long-term City Manager position, even though we had gold here in the city of Frankfurt with Fred already agreeing his interim. But I wouldn't mind if we proceeded the same path that we did the last time, in terms of getting national search groups to see if they could find us a, a good fit.
Okay, I concur with that. Likewise, in doing the opposition to that.
Not at all.
Yes, to Commissioner Wilder.
I do have a, I don't have any objection to that. I do have a question. Well, and I guess first a comment, in terms of is it possible to get someone started before eight twenty-seven to allow Fred to work side by side? Obviously, I think anybody can agree that would be ideal or preferable. I'd say there, I, if, if that is too short, then I'd say the two types of candidates who could probably just come in right on the, on the button are either somebody who has served as a City Manager before, so they have less of a learning curve, even though they still have to catch up with what's going on here in the city, or if we fill the position internally, if we fill the interim position internally, presumably somebody who's already within the city would have less catching up to do. Those are just thoughts to put on the table.
I think that's, that's a good point to make, that very well may be, the interim could be someone within the city.
And I, then I have one question, and I'm not even really sure who to ask it to. In terms of the interim position, how, how wide a net is it reasonable to cast? As in, I assume that nobody's going to want to fly out here from New York to take a part, you know, to take a, not a part-time position, but to take a finite position. So what's the?
Well, according to the reason, it would do it with the Lexington Herald, Courier-Journal, State Journal, and in this area for the, for the interim.
I wouldn't see the need to cast a wider, nothing than that.
Yeah, I don't see, no, I don't see anyone. Yeah. You know, the last time we went in to the discussion, you know, names just popped right up, and we all, we thought it was a home run. And so maybe.
And we were right.
Yeah, maybe we have the same thing this time. Okay, then, Mr. Donahue, you heard the discussion, so I guess you could, you got any comments you'd like to make?
Just briefly, I just couldn't hear it real good. Are we talking about putting it back out there to, for search firms to make proposals? Are we talking about maybe, since we're not required to do proposals, you could compact the process a little bit by, by just looking at the ones that we got last year? And there were, I think, two or three firms that floated to the top, but it got down to, the main thing is picking a firm that you're comfortable working with, that you feel like they've got the resources and that they feel, you feel like they understand what you feel like are the issues facing the city. So on the, the search firm side, I believe that, you know, we could start all over again, but I believe we could cut some time off the process by just setting up interviews with the top two or three firms from the last time we did this and letting the commission or a subcommittee of the commission determine which firm they're most comfortable with and get the process started.
That seems reasonable to me.
Getting the RFP out there, and I mean, you know, giving them three or four weeks to respond and put a package together just kind of drags the process out. We could call the top three firms and find out if they're interested in refreshing their price and, and working for the city in 2012, and if they are, figure out what we'd do next. And I guess that becomes, do we invite them to the work session for August 13th, or do you want to have a special, a special meeting to do that, or do you want to create a subcommittee to do that, sort of outside of the formal meeting process, or, I don't know, I guess I'm.
How do you, you're familiar with working this type of process than I am. I'd like to sort of rely on you and your judgment and suggestions.
Well, I've, I've never really actually used a national search firm, so this is kind of outside of my, my experience as well. I mean, I, I think we can do it whatever way the commission is most comfortable.
I think it probably would be, in terms of comfort, probably would be best maybe, at least in my opinion, to invite them to a work session.
Rest of the commission, does it object?
Just ask them if they could maybe make a 15 to 20-minute presentation on what their firm can offer the city in regards to a search for a City Manager candidate, and let them put their 15-minute sales pitch on, and then afterwards, the committee could, I don't know if it's an open session or a closed session kind of discussion, but then we need to make a decision and, and get them engaged. I think, as I recall, the proposals last time, a big part of their process is coming in and working with the elected officials to identify what kind of candidates you want them to be looking for.
Sure.
To identify what you consider the key issues in the community, so that they can try to match the person to the issues they're going to be facing. If, I guess then, if it's okay with the commission, I'll check with the top three firms from 2011, and if they are indeed interested, and as long as there's at least two, have them come in on August 13th and make a, make a presentation for how they would propose to get this done.
Any objection to that? Okay, thanks.
That's the way I'll, that's where I'll take it.
Thank you, Mr. Haddon.
So we just get an interim in the new part?
Any other new business? Any other new business?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddon.
Yes, I have had a conversation with someone today in regard to the sewer development's going to be taken on Taylor Avenue. That's supposed to start soon.
Our goal is to start that project in about two, two and a half, maybe three weeks.
Okay, the concern there comes from the Second Street School.
Yes.
Wondering about traffic flow.
We're having a meeting with them Wednesday morning.
Okay.
With, with members of the school.
Okay.
Discuss that issue.
Okay, because those are the, the way the school runs, it's right by that Taylor Avenue, and they were wondering.
Oh, yes, we know. But yeah, we are meeting with the school individually. We, we had a public meeting Thursday of last week, and we're having another meeting with the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association Thursday of this week, but we felt it was important to meet with the school individually and talk to them.
Okay, all right, perfect.
On the plus side, the singing bridge will be open.
Yeah.
And, and yes, I mean, that was.
That's not doing both at the same time.
That was part of our decision of frankly, when to start the project, because we didn't want to start the project with the singing bridge still closed, so we've, we've kind of pushed the start date out a little bit because of that, so, yes, that was.
Appreciate it.
We did factor that into the process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, if not, we're down to Jurnel. Do I have a motion for Jurnel? Mr. May, you got a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Turner. All right.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes. We are.